Time is seven thirty. I'll call this meeting of the July sixth, the Yarlem Borough Council Board's rise for such a way to store. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Begin with our roll call this evening.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Brea.
President.
Mr. Curtin.
President.
Mr. Flannan.
President.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Segalmore. And Mr. McHam.
Here.
Thank you.
Seven members present at Constituent's Forum. We are also joined by Mayor Harding this evening. Uh, first item on the agenda is community announcements. I'll open the floor for any member of council or mayor to share an item for community good. And now I'll make the same offer to the public. Hearing none, we'll move right along to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items which do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you will be given an opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that particular business item. Members of the public are asked to please come to the front microphone so our sound system can pick you up, state your name and address for the record, and give your comments three minutes in line. So with that, I will open the floor. Would anyone like to speak for public comment this evening? Uh, begin with Ms. Frumater.
Um, I have a handout that goes with this. I would also like it entered into the record. Um, I think I have enough for everyone here. Okay, Ms. Frumater, eighteen West Howard Avenue. Um, as a resident of Yarlem Borough, I am representing the Yarlem Borough Council appeal to June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one decision of the Yarlem Borough zoning hearing board that granted a variance to the vault brewing company doing business at Taffler. Um, I have, um, a number of reasons for this. I know that you had taken a vote to oppose to having the solicitor oppose going to the hearing and speaking, but this is different. This is in regard to the zoning hearing board abusing its discretion. Um, the zoning hearing board, um, their, their decision was not supported by substantial evidence and ignored other substantial evidence. Um, first one being no hardship was established. The primary reason for granting tannery, the zoning decision, there must be a hardship. Um, the Yarlem zoning hearing board in their decision never addressed the fact that no hardship was established or being presented at the hearing. Um, the accessory use did not include a restaurant. The hearing board granted a zoning change of use to a restaurant based on the false testimony that it was just expanding an already existing restaurant. The accessory use was for a tasting room and accessory to a brewery. There's a public safety environmental hazard, um, several environmental issues that were ignored by the zoning hearing board. Um, the parcel is next to Silver Creek, which is adjacent to Adrian T. Bruce School Playground. It's part of Yarlem Borough's open green space preservation. Currently, there's an ongoing serious hazardous issue with Silver Creek and the storm frame creating a potential public safety issue. The other, um, thing that wasn't addressed was air pollution from commercial free garbage too. Um, another thing they did not address was its nuisance bar testimony by several residents and the owner of Taffler demonstrated that it's been an ongoing nuisance bar with noise lights and change of traffic pattern. And the majority of residents opposed it. The zoning hearing board ignored that a majority of residents were opposed at the hearing and also disregarded petition with over three dozen signatures in opposition. Another reason, improper notice. The zoning hearing board did not comply with section nine oh one of the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code notice. Hearing requirements that are written notice must be conspicuously posted on the affected tract of land at least one week prior to the hearing. Additionally, procedural due process was not provided to property owners. The hearing was postponed twice and notice was never mailed to the party status residence with the new dates and times, nor was the new dates and times posted on the affected tract of land. Going as quick as I can here. Um, spot zoning, this is probably the most significant point, spot zoning, which is what was done, is discriminatory. Um, I have a lot of information for you to read here. I won't read the whole thing, but basically, um, the decision ignores the July fifth, two thousand sixteen decision of the Yarlem Borough Council to not permit a transportation-oriented district zoning overlaying. Um, the hearing board decision singly allows one law with different treatment from that accord to similar surrounding land for which it is indistinguishable in character for the economic benefit of one property ignoring the general welfare of the community making the zoning hearing board decision arbitrary and unjustified and discriminatory. So again, I know that you have voted to not oppose it, but this is different. This is in regard to zoning hearing board not following its own regulations, not following its own protocols, and I don't think that that should be put on the residents to have to appeal it. Um, and I just think that if this isn't addressed by Yarlem Borough Council, that there could be a lot of potential other issues that had come out of this. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, and I know you rushed through and requested it just be entered into the record in its entirety. Is there any objection from council? If we go ahead and do that? Siri, enter. Any additional public comment? Just want to get, and while you're walking up, I'm just going to check in with Bucky for a second for process regarding appeals to zoning hearing decisions. We generally wait for a written decision.
Yeah, at that point, definitely not considered further action.
All right, so just for everyone's knowledge of how this works, as a council will await a formal written decision from the solicitor concerning hearing board, at which point we open a window of time during which we could make a determination whether or not to appeal. So because we haven't received that written decision yet, uh, the clock has not begun.
So is it okay to talk to that?
Go ahead, yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Melissa Fladingham, and I live in one oh six South Main Street. Um, I just, a couple things that I wanted to say. One of it is that I want to make sure that people understand that there are more people affected by what happens at the Taff Room and at the Tannery than just the immediate houses that surround the outline of that property. Sometimes, um, that, that has been shown of those houses, well, there's a lot more areas that are, um, affected. Uh, if you think about on the opposite side of South Main Street, we get a lot of noise at, we hear the noise from up there when the, the, the music was outside. We get traffic lights coming from College Avenue into our front room, um, a lot of headlines. Um, we've talked to people up on Greed and in Penn Valley, which also signed the petition because they have a lot more traffic at night. Those are generally very quiet streets. Well, there's a lot of traffic. Um, and also on, um, Eastern West College, there's more ways to get to the Tannery than just coming down after and turning right on the street and going down that way. So there are more people affected by an increase in traffic. And the petition may have had the wrong title, but we knew that all of the people who were signing that petition were well aware of what they were signing and what they were against, and they wanted to make sure that there was a, that the variance was not allowed to allow for a restaurant at the Tannery. Um, and that variance just opens the door. And you may think that you can shut it, but we have lived in several small communities in our years since we left New York City, and I gotta tell you, once that door is open, you can't stop it. And I don't think that this town has got the bank account to deal with the court filings that would happen. Um, and I think one thing that I really liked about the last meeting was what Susan Taylor brought up, because she talked about having the council do a master plan. You know, don't do anything about that property now, but make, update a master plan. I'm not aware of what you have, but, um, or create a new one and find out what the community wants. How does the community see the future of Yarlem? What, when you think about ten, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years from now, then you kind of imagine it, look down Main Street or up, up, what do you see and what do you hope for the community at that time? And I think it's an important time in all the history of this town to do that because it looks like we're getting a lot of attention. Property values are coming up, businesses are wanting to move in, so I think this is the perfect time to do that. And, and then I think everybody can be clear about what's acceptable and what isn't. And, uh, spot zoning is not planning for the future. That does not go with planning for the future. That is a, a one-time decision to help out one person. But as I said before, we have seen that happen, and you will not stop the other people who want the same thing, and the next thing you know, you've got a little more out there. Um, because the Tannery was designed, uh, was zone of light industry for a reason, and sits in the middle of a residential area, and it's also next to a school. So I'm just pleased at the council to consider reversing the zoning, um, board's, uh, variance, what it probably called. I'm not good at the words, but I also, I'd love to look at things on the internet and do research and things like that, and I found something interesting. I'm not going to even give that out to you to read, but, um...
If you could just give us maybe a thirty minute or thirty second summary. We're at time on your comments.
Oh, it's all right, but I don't want to read it all out, because I think you'll enjoy reading it. It's, it's something, um, soaking the fire. Wood burning ovens produce delicious food and dangerous air pollution. And this was written in two thousand eighteen. It's by the Court's Daily Obsession. The Court said it's something that is basically a business, uh, paper that goes out of New York City for basically all over the world. This covers Italy, Montreal, um, uh, I kept on, Brazil, and also Salt Lake City, where the president of the Utah Physicians, this is my favorite line, he's the Utah, uh, president of the Utah Physicians for a Healthy Environment, and he told the Salt Lake City Magazine, "If you live next to a home or restaurant with a wood burning fireplace, your health is screwed. You might as well live in Beijing." And I have to tell you, Beijing is not one of the places that I look forward to living in. Maybe someplace else, but not Beijing, and so I don't think we want to come Beijing. Thank you. I will, um, dear, do you want to, I'll give it to you guys and then just pass it down.
Please watch the court.
Oh, okay, sure. Thank you. I hope I have a mind, but thank you very much for letting us speak.
Any other public comment this evening?
Hi, I'm Paul Luzowski. I live in O'Neal, South Main Street, and I was very disappointed with the ruling that the zoning commission did the other night. Uh, several, um, residents presented wonderful, valid reasons why there shouldn't, the, the zoning board should not grant the variance to the Taff Room, including thirty-seven signatures from neighbors that were most affected. We felt that they didn't listen to us. They didn't listen to our concerns. We felt we were dismissed offhand, just like that. It was a fifteen-minute decision, and they didn't even give us a reason after we presented all our findings. Uh, and I know that there are, uh, two of you, I think, who, uh, that said that you wanted to get more facts before you had a decision on this matter. And one of you said that it doesn't matter if you bring the food up or you cook on-site. What's the difference? Well, there is a big difference, uh, because, uh, according to the, um, council meeting on May eighteenth, the gentleman who was in charge of the smoker that they want to install at that Taff Room said that the smoker is equal to eight or ten, uh, backyard fires going at the same time. Well, I researched it, and it says, according to Scientific Daily Magazine, the smoke of one just wood burning barbecue emits eleven pounds of carbon dioxide per hour. And he said it would be equal to ten. That would give you a hundred and ten pounds of carbon dioxide per hour. He said that the smoke is going to go twelve hours a day, three or four days a week. That's forty-eight hours a week of smoke would give you one thousand three hundred and twenty pounds of carbon dioxide per day. He said it would go three or four days a week. That would give you five thousand two hundred and eighty pounds of carbon dioxide per week, times fifty-two, gives you almost two hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds of carbon dioxide being emitted from the smoker each year. And, um, and he also said in terms of the smoke, well, you can just, that, uh, you can't control Mother Nature. And according to Families for a Clean Environment, their EPA researchers state that wood smoke is twelve times more carcinogenic than cigarette smoke, twelve times more. And so I was curious, why do they grant a variance and have surrounding homeowners and children who live in the school and the playground right next to the Taff Room? Why are you submitting us the forty-eight hours of carcinogenic smoke in a neighborhood that doesn't allow kitchens? I don't know. I don't care. And they didn't explain why. Why did they do that? And I would just like to also request that the council, uh, appeal the zoning board's decision and take a formal position on this matter in an age where Tesla, Cadillac, and Lamborghini are all coming up with all electric vehicles can hardly be concerned about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment tonight? Going once, I'll, okay, here, come on.
Uh, my name is, uh...
Go ahead.
Jonathan Woodring, um, I'm with a fourteen man board, and, um, I think there's been a lot of, of attention paid to the zoning and the variance and everything that was said, and I understand that. Um, there's a separate issue that, that, that I think has gotten, um, lost along the way, and that is the issue with parking lot and the erosion and the fact that ML seven has basically ignored any comment about the, how that will be addressed. That issue's getting worse every single day. We cannot get anyone to respond to inquiries. Um, we cannot get a copy of the engineer's report to evaluate the suitability of that. And, and, and I think unfortunately, and I know Jim very well, I'm, he's a friend, but right, but these issues have gotten combined, and they're separate issues in my head. And I would request that official, I don't know how this works, but, but I don't know if we need to request as an official agenda item for, to be addressed here. Um, I would request that. Um, you guys tell me how that works. The second piece is, it's temporally sensitive, and that, as it's not addressed, the erosion is getting worse. That's not being addressed. There's no remediation plan. There's no temporal bounding on money will be addressed. It's on Al's property. It's on my property. It's on Don's property. No one seems to be listening, and, and I'd request an agenda item for how we can have that be something that we can address collectively, officially. In the meantime, I'd request a plan for the immediate remediation that, that stops the problem. Um, and third, I'd request for, um, a copy of the engineer's report. So, um, again, there, there are two distinct issues in my head, um, and I think because they've been combined, I, I just ask us to think about them. There's two separate issues that are related in terms of proximity, right? Parking lot and Taff Room are right there, and temporally. They're both happening at the same time. And I, yeah, that's what I would say.
Thank you. To briefly respond, ML seven, for those who are not, uh, familiar with this issue, I think we can boil it down to one step. This is a case where the contractor did not follow the engineering plans that were originally submitted. And I know that we've got more engineers and lawyers involved in this situation than are probably people sitting at this table. I know, and as was just mentioned, we do have an action item. We are taking a very serious look at that. We've been in a number of discussions about what the correction is going to be there. Um, so although it may not have been something that you're seeing actively handled by way of a vote on council, uh, I just want to reassure you that it is certainly something that the borough is taking a serious look at and playing the role that we need to play in making sure that some action is taken there. Because I know it is affecting the properties. I could take a walk back and have a look at it, and you can see quite easily without any training what, what's happened as a result. So more to come. We'll get to that in a little bit later. Do you have anything else for public comment tonight? Going once, going twice, public comment closed. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda for today, July sixth. Uh, contains a number of items which I'll read off now. It is approval of the minutes from our fifteenth meeting, approval of the bills list dated for today, July sixth, approval of three certificates of appropriateness. They are, uh, twenty-one dash fourteen, which is for a sign at nineteen East Allen Avenue, twenty-one dash sixteen, which is for a door in Canova at fifty-five, East Allen Avenue, twenty-one dash seventeen, just for doors at fifty-six South Main Street, and for credit, if you recognize that that's the address of Borough Hall. And the final item is an event permit for the Philly-ish small business vendor show October ninth and tenth. Would any member of council like one of these items to be considered separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Any questions, comments, concerns from the council? Any comments from the public?
Just a question.
Jim, strap on.
David Appleton, thirty-nine restaurant. Um, just out of curiosity, could you describe what a Philly-ish small business vendor show is and where it's going to be?
I'll defer to Manager Johnson.
Some small vendors who like to host a show down that material. Some local people, some, of course, Philly a little more.
This is yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Frumater.
Yes, um, I just have some questions on the bills list. Um, selective insurance company in America paid online, J-21, eleven thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars. How many are these payments per year?
I'm not sure how many per year, but that's for workers comp and our regular insurance.
And the regular insurance is what's covering all of the lawsuits that are, that have been against the borough. So again, I, I'm trying to get a total amount of what we're paying in insurance, and I've seen this number come up several times, so I don't know if it's sixty thousand a year or seventy thousand a year. You don't have any idea?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can get that to you.
Okay, so, um, the other thing is check number one nine one seven seven, American Express, July sixth, four thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. What does that amount represent specifically?
Could be stamps. It could be, um, supplies, anything that we have to pay for right away that we cannot write a check for.
Four thousand dollars is a lot of stamps.
It's not all stamps. I said it's supplies. There's other things. There's stuff in the police department. There's stuff in our office. There's stuff at the code.
So again, if it's for the police department, is that coming out of their budget?
Yeah.
Because credit cards are...
It's akin to where a company might have a purchasing card, but they use it in addition to purchase orders or check requests. So we do, uh, in our most package, get the statements and attach receipts every month.
Okay, because that is where boroughs get in trouble with credit cards, not that specifically. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? If there is any other question, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any ayes? Any extensions? Motion carries seven to zero. We'll hand it over to Chief Kelly for your report.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Very briefly, to title my habit of service, I think, for June of twenty twenty-one, the police department handled four hundred and thirty-nine calls per service, issued seventy-six traffic citations, issued one non-traffic citation, investigated seven motor vehicle accidents, and made three arrests.
Thank you. Chief?
Chief, I have a question. Where were the seven accidents? Were they from Ilyon, Mont Street, or a one intersection?
I would have to find out for you. In a given month, generally, most of our accidents occur along South Main Street and the wall of, or, I'd like to find out.
Thank you. Moving on, Manager Johnson, your report.
As you are aware, um, third time is the charm, and Yarlem Borough is successful in receiving an elevation grant for twenty twenty. Uh, we have one mitigation reconstruction, and then we have ten homes that we're going to be elevating, so I would like to ask council to accept and approve the agreements that are being moved forward with this project. And we do have some more artists in the audience.
Right, so at this time, I will ask council, if anyone would like to make a motion to accept and prove grant agreements for the twenty twenty elevation program. So, motion from Mr. Ross, again for Ms. Thompson. Any comments, questions from council? Anything from the public? Hearing none. I'll call that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries seven to zero. And I know that some of you have been waiting for quite some time to become part of that program, so congratulations.
Oh, a quick question that may already ask me. It seems like there's rabid Lawrence signage going up. Is it permanent?
No, they're just temporary, because it looks like there's going to be a detour of the bridge.
Okay.
So they told me today it should just temporary.
I have also a question. I see that you meant about the CRS rating. Can you tell us a little bit about how, how we're looking? Any positive feedback?
We did get positive feedback, and it looks like we won't hear anything definite until next May. They're not the biggest movers, as we all know, but we're, we're at the ten percent, and we're going to be exceeding that in the near future as well, because we're, we're getting extra points for all the elevations. Um, it looks like PICO is a go, so there's fifty points just for that, so think of really good CRS. They're just really slow and, um, don't have a lot of people working, so...
Your view is on that, Chris? Thank you.
Can I, sir, I want you to have the motion?
Go ahead.
Is it okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just curious about, uh, what's the current status with the website, and we do have no information, it's difficult to update it, which we're constantly expecting to.
I did talk to Charles last week, and he does have something ready for us to look at, so we anticipate probably by the end of this week, having like a demo with him. So it should be pretty soon with that one as well. Would you like to be on that?
Sure, I'd love to.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you. All right, I guess I'll start.
Compliment. Um, it, it seems to figure it out. Um, it's wonderful, um, and that, uh, you know, credit that our staff, they're also very worthy of the talk, is from the applause that, um, your work is not, uh, I feel, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other final comments, questions from the manager's report? All right, hearing none, we will move to Agent.
All right, um, for general updates, I have two action items, those size from those that I have anything else to say, unless I have any questions about the four items.
Wait, how, how far are we away from final approval of the Mary Ellen Bridge?
That's in the project updates.
All right, I think we're close there.
Um, okay, so, um, the very first action item is in regards to the ML seven project. Um, we had a lead with all the impacted residents. We had a meeting with all the impacted residents on June 30th. We had the solicitor reach directly to them. We did get some movement. There were meetings at the end of last week, so it was a call today. Bucks County Conservation District is also involved. They are requesting that ML7 submit an application for the remediation plan to them before work is allowed to begin. They told us they're going to submit it by the end of this week. What we want to be proactive with in action, and what we have tonight, is to receive permission from council to move forward with citations if we do not see a submission by the end of this week. We don't want to wait till over 20th to get permission for that. We want to have the authority to promote it.
All right, so motion being requested is that council approve, bringing to burn it and.
The solicitor has.
With our solicitor, some citations being added, we do not receive those.
Yes, there's no.
Yeah, I'm afraid that is authorized. The solicitor needs you to take further action, including issuing some appropriate citations in the event actions received or acceptable.
Yeah, because the MLB issued all tax breaks had expired as of last week.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Can I ask a question before that? If the mediation plans are not, do not go far enough, can we also authorize tonight for you to still issue citations? Like, can you make that determination without us, or should we really vote again?
I would be in the camp of, if they don't do anything, let's, if they do something that is probably not sufficient for you, then let's talk about it. And that's kind of where I'm at, but I would also appreciate that. I don't have any history on this, this kind of predates me, and so I don't know if that is you or this, but if somebody, David, I'd love to just get a little bit of the background of what work they did and when this happened, so I don't have that history. If we can, yeah, before we vote, I just, maybe the elevator version.
I do an elevator. Okay, so the Chinginis reached out to Paula in September of 2020 acknowledging that they had lost a tree due to some commercial issues. RBE went out to perform inspection in October of 2020, and began contacting ML7 to tell them that they could do some remediation efforts. Fast forward to now, there, we have given up every courtesy to address this issue, and they have been laughing. They have an internal issue where it was the contractor's fault that broke through a firm that goes along outside.
Who is ML7? What work were they doing that caused?
Sure, ML7 is the property owner to expand the parking lot. And as part of their parking lot expansion project, they relocated the asphalt on their property from higher up to very edge. And so it was designed to enter into a swell, go along the edges of their ground, and slowly into silver. Yeah, and high velocity.
Thank you. All right, so that's the background. Motion being requested, sir, council to authorize for action, including the issuance of citations if the plan is submitted.
If they don't submit.
If they don't submit.
Okay.
Second. All right, motion made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Any further deliberation or questions on this subject from council? Anything from the public?
I think this needs to be said in the context of what's happened here at ML7. This was brought to council's attention, I brought it to your attention eight months ago, that the trees were falling. I had pictures, everybody, I brought up the fact that code enforcement never goes back and inspects anything. I brought up the fact that the zoning officers didn't do anything. And even back then, you were trying to figure out what you were going to do about it. So in all that time, now we have a real problem, and again, you're talking about a citation. Does it have any teeth? There should have been penalties, there should have been citations nine, eight months ago. And as far as that parking lot being put in, how did that even happen within previous service? Again, it goes back to zoning, granting these special exemptions, destroying the town, destroying people's homes. We cannot just have everything being loose and fast with the ordinances, because this is the unintended consequences of allowing places to develop like this. That was also another special thing, to take a whole hill off and not expect the creek right next to it to start collapsing. So again, in the context of everything, we need to start following our ordinances, and our code enforcement and zoning officers need to start doing their job, or they need to be fired. Because we can't have people's homes being safety and everybody having to go through this. So I would like to know what the citation actually does. Does it find them? Does it give them a limit? It does find them, because we never find anybody. They do everything they want, and then we just say, okay, you did it, so now we're going to allow them. So I hope that you're finally going to follow through, so that all of the property owners affected by this are not harmed or.
Thank you. I do want to respond to that briefly, because I think those comments paint the picture, that council has done nothing about anything that's gone over in ML7. And in context, that's simply not true. Regarding zoning, it's my recollection that we did fire the zoning officer who did most of the approvals hook there. And in regards to the correction, we have long been in talks, and I think it's probably fair to say that we're dealing with someone that says, hey, we're going to fix it, and then they don't. So it's disingenuous to say that we've done nothing. We are at the point now where we're going to send citations, we're probably going to find them, but ultimately, we're trying to work towards a solution. We don't just want to shut the door and have project managers and engineers and owners that walk away from it, because that is certainly a realistic outcome in situations like this one. So although it's tempting to come down with a philosophy that is just to issue penalties, issue fines, we have to remember that we have to keep a working relationship open, because we want to fix the problem for the homeowners that are being affected. You can't get blood from a stone, and we're trying to be mindful of that. With that being said, we leave further comment before council takes a vote. All right, here and now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries seven to zero.
And then our second action item is in regard to the next round of DCD MTF grant funding that is due at the end of the month, so RBE requests permission to prepare applications for Phase 3 of North Main.
Motion was made by Ms. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any questions, deliberation from council?
Real quick, Phase 3, Matt, that would go, all that goes to Dolan, is that on paper?
Related questions?
The one question people have that has been asked is, is like, will, like, will conjunction happen?
That would be.
The most nuanced, I guess, that it is.
Well, that, yeah, that's on Phase 2, we're getting to that.
That's on project updates.
Yeah, we're close. All right, thank you. Any questions from the public on the Phase 3 application? You're in on it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, now, project updates. Made at the intersection, we're still going through the process of formally closing it out. We spoke with the DMO people, they gave us the current forms, we filled them out, they're reviewing them, hopefully they're go and will be done. Mary Garby Bridge, at the end of the day, the state change that have a redraft of permits, so we are in the process of following a few procedures, but we are hoping to have all those submissions out the door by the end of this week or early next week. And once we get all the permits, we can go out to bid. So moving as quickly as we can. PICO property, as Paula mentioned a little bit earlier, tonight, we did finally get the okay from PICO that they were going to purchase property for $5,000. So either we can wait until the next land acquisition grants in April, or we can find another grant opportunity that survives that was in place. That's a thing of our, if we pursue other grants, just try and get sooner, or we go on one that we have some other history about, you know, where we'll have that last. We can discuss that on the books, probably.
Yeah.
And then, North Main Street sidewalk, so we are just getting ready to resubmit the HOP. We have to finalize some notification letters to show that all impacted residents have been formally notified of the target that's happening. Once the HOP submitted, they have 30 days to approve it. We also have some requirements for the 10 dot MTF grant that we were awarded. We completed some environmental work, I submitted PICO and TRPO, so they're all out last week. And we have some forms that we have to formally submit to 10 dot MTF people to get access to the grant funding, but that's just for construction things. So timing with that should not hold us up for moving forward. So we're really hoping that construction's going to start.
That is good news. Any questions on any of those items?
Just on the, maybe you said we covered public works, but on the PICO property, going place for these types of grants, is there a scenario where you can get grant money retroactively? So for example, if we were to spend, we decided, for whatever reason, we have funds, we don't want to take a chance, and maybe PICO changed their mind, or some change in the person you're dealing with there, whatever, is there an opportunity, potentially, to buy and to close, and then you, within some period of time, get retroactively reimbursed?
Yes, most land acquisition grants do work out, because they understand that that process doesn't care about the grant timelines.
Right, okay.
So it's usually the beginning, that you have to, so if you apply for the grant within a year, you're going to pay for it.
I'd like to, I want to second that line, I think we should discuss it more in public work, because we have this super low interest credit line, and basically, at that price, for a sudden, you just, you just pop it. You know, I think we want to look at when, because I think, and who you could, it just was, be pretty likely that we'll be able to get a grant covered, it's just, you know, we don't want to lose opportunity.
That's where I was going here with the credit line. We have to use it for a certain period of time anyway, maybe that's something.
Excellent.
We will talk about the public work, and hope to have that on our recommendation for you. So that we can hash it out, put it on the next agenda or the next one. Yeah, I agree, things like that will do that. Our cost flows are going to be strange the next two, three years anyway, with American Rescue Plan money coming through. You know, it should be said, acquiring this property has a number of benefits to the borough, it's going to help with those, with the community rate system, which could translate to production and fund insurance premiums. We also use it for a number of borough events. I know it's, anything from parking to canal weening has taken place over there, so there's just a lot of good things in acquiring that lot of land. And of course, once we do, it's guaranteed you won't see development there, which should be the case with the floodplain ordinance, but it's not always so.
And we should point out that the cost of it really is quite reasonable compared to what we paid for a sterile field, which I think was, do like a 60 or 300,000 range, something like that.
Any further questions, please, Clay? All right, here and now, let's close that portion of the meeting. I'll move to Mr. Klosser for solicitor's report.
Yes, just one item I wanted to report to council, that the state legislature amended the Sunshine Act. We take it back to the beginning of August. The amendments mainly deal with meeting agendas, so all municipalities will now be required by the Sunshine Act to post a meeting agenda at least 24 hours prior to every meeting. And then further amendments restrict the ability of the municipality to change or add to the agenda from the one that's posted, there's sort of exceptions. Basically, it's not on the agenda that's posted, you can't take action unless a few exceptions apply, like emergency, that sort of thing. So again, it takes effect August 30th, so we can make sure that we're in compliance at that time.
Thank you. I know that one's been discussed after a while, and we've got signed into law, so we'll be mindful of that change. Mr. Klosser, Mayor's report, you're running. I have no reports, you can move. Thank you. We'll go right down the line then for council member reports. Mr. Kirk.
No reports.
Mr. Ross.
No.
Ms. Segal Morris.
No.
Let's get right through it. We have no report. Ms. Thompson.
Just highlighting from Manager Johnson's report, the applications that are for funding this file on time, that we expect the full amount of the funds that you were qualified for in three to four weeks. So very good news after the screening of the last meeting. Thanks to Paula and Todd for all the work on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McCann.
No report, but I'll wish it a late happy birthday to her.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Finer, any report?
I'm just, just very happy to hear that experience Charlie is putting on, music on main this summer, coming back, starting July 31st with Peter Bees, Blue Train, Big Date, clock on Saturday, July 31st. And I just think it's great that they're doing it, and that it brings people and energy to Main Street, and especially after what the businesses on Main Street have been through and the community's been through, I'm really looking forward to it, and I appreciate that they're doing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCann. And that'll close. Council member reports. I do have an item under discussion items tonight. I think council can actually reach a decision on this regarding reopen plan and guidelines. As everyone is well aware, the Emergency Declaration of the Governor was rescinded by the legislature after the amendments to the Constitution passed, the primary, and we here in Yarley had tied our waiver of a number of restrictions to the Emergency Declaration. We had a meeting a few weeks ago where we talked with the chief about what the public safety implications were if we let up some of these tents for the outdoor dining space. I know that we're trying to consider both sides, where businesses, right, they need a new boost after, it was probably the worst year that anyone could remember in that industry, but then also balancing the public safety constraints, the parking restraints. As it stands, council does need to take action, because technically, we have not extended the waiver of those zoning requirements. So it would be my suggestion that we do provide an extension through Labor Day, would be explicit contingency that if establishments have sent up outdoor dining, that their total capacity does not exceed their total indoor capacity, right? So if they move things outside, that's okay, but the caveat is that it's not, right, it's not increasing overall capacity for the establishment. I think that was always our intention when we elected these changes last year, we can explicitly state that, so if anybody's invited to do that now. Just for formality's sake, would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
And we reduce total number of, I mean, what does it look like to enforce that? When tents come in, all people be dinner, and some people hop in, I just don't think that can happen. So wouldn't it be more realistic to have outdoor tents reduce the number of tables that they have outside, so that the total number of tables and chairs between the two places does not exceed their capacity, or they're at least closer to that? Because right now, some of the establishments have 200% seating.
Well, right, I mean, the goal is that the total is limited to their capacity, and the restaurant can decide how they want to treat the dining inside or outside. I mean, in terms of enforcement, right, I think we've got to issue, issue some more citations. I think it's pretty clear that restaurants are taking advantage of the situation. I don't want us to do nothing.
Can I also just?
I think it's a matter of us enforcing the rules, but I think if we start to require to limit the number of tables, it gets complicated for anyone to ever run a restaurant, manage a restaurant, starts to count how many chairs or how many table draps, moving back and forth. It seems a bit like, like, makes sense to say that, but I think to them, I think we have to be clear that the capacity is the capacity, so don't exceed it, but not to start counting how many table, chairs.
to start counting how many table chairs, how many people, but not to, not to shortage.
Are we looking for that? I'm confused as to what the distinction I was drawing here is.
Well, I think, what I think, no, I'm sorry, just, I think the issue is, if we just approve it the way you proposed it, right, I think you have the issue of you're relying on the business to be rational in terms of their overall capacity. I think that the restaurant or the institution would probably say, like, if I have more tables, let me manage where I seat them, because some people may prefer to be outside versus inside on one day or another. The risk that it's, does it ever actually get enforced at any given time? I'm probably in a camp, especially if we're only going to go until Labor Day, that would take maybe a little longer, but we can take a look at that, we can take a look at, right? I'm giving it more flexibility, particularly during summer. But again, I know what you, which concerns beyond just looking after the business and kind of coming back to it.
I mean, yes, like, let's have some live conversation here, let's figure this out, because it's been lingering for a while. I mean, what we kicked around was using the capacity as the number, because that's an existing number we have from the use in occupancy permits for every establishment.
And I'll just jump to a similar point that Matt made, I think it's important that, you know, with the number of tables and chairs, the choice that people are given, and also, you know, we did talk with the chief, and there hasn't been any safety issues so far. I don't know if that has come up at all anymore since the last time we.
Still no public safety.
And so, I mean, that was one of the big factors on the other end. But you're right, like, logistically, are we really going to go out there and enforce and count tables and count heads and all those things, where it seems like it's worked outside of, you know, that basically restaurants have been doing a good job of running it so far. We didn't have any restrictions in the initial motion.
We did not. I mean, the reason for including it was that it's come up a number of times, you know, whether it be through public comment or elsewhere. But we could certainly just extend what we had in place from start, which did not explicitly acknowledge the capacity limitations.
Interesting jump on that, too. I just think, you know, with the restaurants recovering a little bit, and, you know, frankly, I don't know what Yard Lake's like in the summer compared to the purpose of summers in terms of revenue, but I know a lot of times, sure, it's a bit late, a lot of, you know, the weekends and things like that, that you can give a lecture, especially sit outside, you know, could be something that I would be a favor of. Like I said, I think it'd be difficult to manage moving forward in terms of all restaurants counting and going around managing that.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Well, I couldn't quite hear that. I'm sorry, I think it was John, but I think this is pretty easy to accomplish by just what has been communication with the restaurants, and since their capacity is already their capacity, to remind them that that capacity applies to the entire establishment, and to occasionally do random checks and let them know, you know, it's not that hard, it's busy time. They just do, you know, quick run-through, count the, you know, I think it's subject to that, so that they know that we're serious about it, it's not like it'd be forgotten about. And to ask them, I think it's fair to ask for that in exchange for the flexibility. And I think they would appreciate the extension that grades regarding, I'd actually like for us to talk about extending it beyond Labor Day, but let's get clear on the capacity, because for obvious reasons, they can't expand their capacity. We never, we never approved that anyway.
All right. So what I think I'm hearing is council would refer to just extend the previous waiver that was in place. Through Labor Day? I would like to make that motion. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that, and a second from Mr. Pyne. All right, so that would be to extend the waivers related to parking and outdoor seating for restaurants that was in place through COVID through Labor Day of this year. There is a gap in that, so we're admitting that would be retroactive extension as well. We haven't cited anyone, but technically we did allow that extension to lapse. Any other questions, comments from council?
They have.
Yeah.
I know this can be extended. Are there any establishments that have been booked outside already past Labor Day?
Now, I'm not sure.
I'm just thinking of one place in particular, to weigh in on stuff.
I can relate to the question, if outdoor tents booked already.
So again, just something we may do, that's how it's basically established, to see how we can let that work.
Right.
It may have to be solved tonight.
And I would think, too, just, we can look at it a little more, but if they have something set up, or the event planning process, whatever it may be.
Just something to think about. That's their point.
How else questions from the public?
Okay, where do I begin?
You'll find somewhere, I'm sure.
Yes. First of all, I am for the restaurants. I don't understand why, when this happened, some restaurants were allowed to have tents and outdoor dining, while other restaurants were discriminated against, and were told that they weren't allowed to have outdoor dining, and asked to take tents down from their parking lot. Meanwhile, we have a new business in town that's having to have to go through a process to put in outdoor dining, while you're granting it to the whole town. So that's one.
Can you elaborate?
Well, specifically, Bianca Rose had tents on their parking lot, they wanted tables out front, and they were told they can't have that. That's not true. They were told they can't have it, and it was taken down. Don't lie. Don't lie.
You're free to make your comments, but I think everybody up here knows what the case is.
Yes.
Tents were looked at for certainly public safety, right? A lot of these tents, they're over structures, they have electricity running through them, but nobody was told that they weren't allowed to do it. So that is out of the.
Our code enforcement officer, that we all know is the one who picks winners and has been accused of.
Be careful.
I'm allowed to say whatever I want. This is a public meeting, and I can say what I want.
Direct it to me.
I'm directing it to you. Code enforcement, our code enforcement officer, has neglected this whole town, except for the people he is friends with. So now you're putting him in charge of deciding what's a public safety issue. Let me tell you, in front of the vault on Main Street, by county, state, local, any public safety ruling, you cannot walk on that sidewalk. That is not safe. I've seen carriages have to go into the street to get around that. When people are sitting there, they get mad when you're walking by with your dog. And you're putting our code enforcement, who walks by there every day, and, you're right, I won't go too far, but he does not ever cite certain people, but has no problem shutting down tents from other restaurants. And picking and choosing winners is the very definition of cronyism, which is what this town is being sued for. So when you do this, do it fairly. If you're going to do it, make sure that every restaurant in this town has the same opportunities. Don't put somebody that obviously has been involved in a number of bad, crony decisions, telling one restaurant they can't open up, while allowing others they can. That's a significant part of this.
I simply cannot allow the accusation that open cronyism and corruption takes place with this council or with the staff. Can we argue about the decisions and the interpretations? Sure. Can we be unhappy with outcomes? Absolutely. But what you're suggesting is that there is open negligence of the law, that this town is pay to play, and the fact is that it's not true.
You're being sued for it in a federal lawsuit, so it's not even needed.
By who? Did you, have you ever considered that? By who? There's always someone out here who is willing to take things far beyond the reality.
Case wasn't thrown out, was it? It's still ongoing, and we're paying for it. All the residents of this town are paying for it.
Your comment is now over. Thank you for sharing and demonstrating how little you understand this government functions. Would anyone else like to comment? And for those of you who have some problem, because I was, myself, this is in regards to reopening plan and the waiver for outdoor seating. Mr.? Yes, please.
So, I mean, as one of the three restaurants that had a tent, and just to get, might be helpful by any perspective.
Thank you.
The three restaurants that have a tent got there pretty hard during COVID, and the supporting of the council was amazing, allowing us to open up tents, see people outside, didn't cover the gap, but it helped out an absolute ton, and we all really appreciate that. Our personal experience, we don't sit the town road, not even talking about that. We're going to take that down, assuming, assuming the two Friday days. We're not sitting the tent down at Vault, but I know, I'm talking with Michelle and Frank, the other two tents, I think it's helping their business recover. And then, you know, my guess is they probably have more people than they're, than they're from the total house. I'm just not sure it's a significant public safety issue at this point. And if they're making an extra $1,000 on Friday night, when they've lost so much, and it's not a demonstrated public safety issue, and you give them a couple more months or in the summer, and if they're seating maybe an extra ten people here or there, I don't see, I really don't see that hurts the community, it kind of helps the community with that. That's just my take on it. But if you guys ask us to take our two tents, and one of them's coming down because it's on the airport requirement, but the one that we have behind Vault, I just have a place historically, we're not sitting it anymore, because we, quite frankly, we don't need it, because, you know, the seating we have inside, from inside is sufficient for the demand that we have. So it's not, I would think we really didn't care one way or the other, but I know from talking with Frank and Michelle, I think they really count, you know, count on having, I don't know for sure if they're making extra money behind the tent, but if they are, I think that's, that's something we've been talking all year, in the year that we all just kind of went through. That helps you a lot.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, good evening. Frederick Ravina from 35 South Main, a law officer, 75 South Main, Philly. My question about what we're discussing is, would that apply to our back restaurant at 35 South Main? The reason I ask is because we implied for outside dining, and then we were denied. So would this extension cover that?
We were applying for a zoning hearing board, and we're still waiting for information on that.
But you, always very helpful there, but I was directed that that's what I need to do. I need to have, in order for me to have outdoor dining, I have to go to the zoning board. The reason I have to go to zoning board is because I put that application in, and the zoning officer denied me. So that's what, you know, to.
It's a parking space issue, right?
Notes for outdoor dining.
Yeah, I think, and again, maybe off, but I think you have a certain number of seats that you're entitled to have within the building. You, away from COVID, requested to have seating outside the building. You weren't denied, you just were told that there's a full process you have to go through, which you started the process of going through. So I think that's where we are. I think the question, which is pertinent, is, okay, that's all great, but I have approval to have people sit inside today. Can I take advantage of this current waiver that while I wait for approval to sit outside, just do it anyway under this waiver? I think that's the question.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't really answer that, but I.
Yeah, so there's two, there's, I'm sorry, I'm wrong there. Yeah, so I think that when I made the application, when I spoke with the zoning officer, then it was Mike Talia, and now there's somebody different there, more, from those names more. So he told me to apply for a change of use, but the restaurant that was there was a restaurant, and we're a restaurant, so there's not really a change in use. So I think I was misdirected with that. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'd like to know. Where, where am I in this process? How does this affect me?
So in a way, two parts of the weeds of your specific application, this sort of brings us back to this common question about capacity limits. The idea was, we were letting restaurants see if they're indoor seating, move it outside, with the understanding that realistically that's in the parking lot, that was going to cause parking challenges, but we all decided that you would live with it because it was short term. My guess is that we're on a similar question with your case, which is that, okay, you're a business with indoor seating, if you wanted to set up a tent and move that seating for that capacity outside as part of COVID relief, my guess would be that the waiver does exempt. This brings council, I think, back to the question of, what do we do in the increased capacity scenario? Because now we're having a lot more people coming into town. Not only are we increasingly increasing seating capacity, but we're increasing seating capacity often in the parking spaces where people will park. So it's a roundabout way of saying that, sure, it would apply, you could set it up, but be aware that when the extension expires, you will have to bring your restaurant back in for me with your current zoning allowances and, you know, whatever else.
Or whatever you get, or you know, or if you get.
Right, or if you get, if you get going.
You get it, yeah.
If you get a variance, that would, that would control, but anything?
Well, yeah, I would just emphasize this is a temporary extension of what council's considering tonight. It's already the middle of July, and later they'll figure soon enough, so, you know, that's.
I'm ready to open whenever you guys.
But you wouldn't want to derail what you're doing otherwise, that other process that would fly to your normal firm basis, this is just a temporary situation.
Right. And we should state, too, the intent of this is to give our businesses that still have the tents, now relying on that, a target date for when things are going to change. Now, sure, we might visit and re-extend, but we were sort of leaving everyone in limbo for a while there, and that wasn't fair for us to do. So that's the intention here. Does it create a unique scenario for you? Sure, but it's going to be short-lived.
Okay. We love your.
But I think, Mr. Ravina, I think you still have to talk to the zoning officer, because you're a little bit different than everybody else. Everybody else, excuse me, everybody else has tents set up already. You're a new business that's coming in, these, these businesses have been established and put up their tents.
And I know there were inspections of the tents themselves before they were allowed to start.
So drop some mark.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, I'm not looking for a tent. You know, the back, the back of the back building, there is a stone patio space. All we want to do is put some tables there. We don't, I don't need a tent, that's, that's not the direction we're going. Just looking to put, like, six picnic tables in the back, and, you know, that people eat their food back, that's all.
Let's go tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll have some offline follow-up?
All right, great. Thanks again.
Any other comments? We're still on the subject of waiver extension. Yes?
I just want to say, I just want to say that outdoor dining is, I think, amazing part of Yard Lake right now, and I think it's, it's really nice to be able to come and sit outside, and even though there's no COVID, just to have more outside dining, I think, could be an asset, so that's fine.
Thank you. And it's certainly something we can look at overall, so in code, decide. I think a lot of communities are doing this, right? They're taking things we learned during COVID and say, hey, we want to do that maybe forever going forward. I anticipate that we'll be no different. It takes some time in the cold winter months to take a look at those things in anticipation of next spring and summer. Any other comments, questions?
Question, Chief. So I know last time we talked about this, obviously we had some concerns about public safety, so we haven't had any incidents yet. Do you feel concerns, or do you feel like the Labor Day can be sustained with our current parking situation?
I think, mainly, we also spoke about the fact that I would monitor weekly and report back to you if I did find concerns, and then at that time, we would leave the window open to make emergent changes at that, at that point. And I think that's something we, we need to keep on the table. If we're seeing an establishment causing problems with their outside seating, and I identify a cluster of police calls at that location, I'd like the ability to come back to council and deal with that specific establishment. Otherwise, no. With my reservations, we're continuing to monitor, if necessary.
Thank you.
So that was, you know, something I think in moderation, day one, we were worried about, more so now, as crowds are coming, but certainly continue to monitor. If there's anything that we should know about, council will take that show off. Any final comments?
I have a final comment, thanks. Not to open up this door again, but I just think it's important for the record, I just want to share, because there was a lot of discussion earlier about just zoning there and, and, and I raise the fact that concerns that people have, especially as a person who has, who led the opposition against the DOD, but I really, I, I looked at the whole zoning hearing, and, and Mr. Ravina's challenge with getting seating while looking at parking capacity, to me, is an example of zoning is a place where they figure this stuff out, and it's complicated, it's not simple, and I think the fact that the, what's going on, he talks at the Panery, is that the capacity has changed, and he is not allowed to have any outdoor seating, using late hours, a tent, and most business owners probably wouldn't go for that. Just this kind of an anomaly, what he's done there, and I think by serving, instead of just serving beer, being able to serve food, you can actually serve less people and have less turnover, which actually will reduce the traffic. It's just sort of a close microcosm. I don't think, when we have empty retail space on Main Street, that any business owner of this town minds would open, would want to open up a restaurant in its visible spot with less street traffic. And I don't think we're opening this door to anything. So my point is just that, let's not kind of get out of hand, worry about this. I don't think the borough needs to go start taking legal appeals to the zoning board, but it's not something that is, you know, outside of the cycle of this year. I don't really see any logical signs where this is going to become a highly controlled situation. I don't mean that disrespect to the people who came. They have their right to deny it, and that's why we have a zoning board. I just don't want to get big wrapped up in that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so just to bring us back on track, any final comments regarding the extension? I want to take the vote, and then I'll have one more opportunity for comment. Is it regards to the extension of the? He was a little outside of.
Yeah.
All right, so let's, let's take the vote on the extension. All right, it's all right, on the extension of the waiver regarding the temporary outdoor seating. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, that carries seven zero. And just for fun, let's open it up for one more round of others. Mr. Radoski.
Yuri, I have a question for you. You, you did not address the pollution that is going to be coming from that smoker. That's one thing you keep not addressing. So, and at that May 18 meeting, council meeting, the gentleman who owns La La Lobster asked the question, if you grant this variance, can other businesses ask for this variance in this area? And Mr. Closer answered that by saying, yes, it can set a precedent. If someone is asking for something similar, it does set a precedent that some, someone can use to get what they want.
Thank you. And again, just, I know this is the hot issue tonight, with the, whether or not council's going to repeal that decision. We're going to wait for the written, we have to wait for the written decision. We've learned from our friends with the zoning hearing board in the past, that sometimes the written decision says things that don't necessarily get discussed during their meetings, so we have to wait for that written document before we can make any decisions, because that will spell out what their reasoning is. With that? Yes. Just under the line.
Good. And I am sure council feels the same way. I am sure council.
Mayor Harden has the floor.
I'm sure council feels the same way, you could say, but I think it needs to be said. I want to thank you publicly for your comments and support, Mr. Radoski. So I just need to know that.
Thank you.
Yeah. We appreciate it.
Just one final thing.
Really quick, really quick.
I have to give my, we just want to try to give our sincere thanks to the borough for their support, I mean, ongoing support of the spending, the great applications for the elevations. It's a, it's a life changer, so good for the community. Anyway, we appreciate, you know, our heart, how much it allows us to already face this game, so, thank you.
All right, one, one more minute, can everybody else do it?
You have an executive session tonight that just said legal. Can you tell us what it's in reference to?
Uh, yes, it is in, I will, I will share. It is in reference to a zoning hearing board decision that we have appealed to the court of common police, and the judge issued a decision.
Oh, good, so you have appealed things before?
We have.
Okay, great, good thing.
With that, as the former mayor stated, there is an executive session that will need to keep following this meeting. There will not be a vote, so there's no need to hang around.
Can I just address a point, too? I really, now looking through it and thinking about the hearing board, they need to pre-issue their statement yet, but this is responding to what the hearing board hasn't even issued their opinion yet. This is responding to all this, and in the back of this, by the comments that went to all of us, our borough staff, and given the dignity of entering this into the record, I would prefer it were a book after the discourse that went on tonight. I'm just thinking about the process, too, that we're adding something into the record that I should respond to something that hasn't even been issued yet.
All right, so let's, let's do this in the interest of time. We stuck that in under the name of the council. We don't have that anymore, so let's discuss it as part of the approval for the minutes at our next meeting. All right. And with that, there will not be a vote. Do we have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.